Say tomorrow or the next day you wanted to watch this meeting back. You can actually see a recording on our YouTube channel. We load up all of our meetings, select board meetings, conservation commission, planning and zoning, et cetera. So as you'll see here, we've got the recording started. We do make mention of that at the beginning of the meeting so people know we're being recorded. We have the owl camera that has a 360 degree view and it's sort of, as you can see, it's pointing at whoever's talking. We do have a little bit of trouble from time to time with the air handlers above this drop ceiling. Kind of a poor design by current standards, but this is a 20 year old building. So they designed it that way. But when it gets hot outside, those things will be blowing cool air and it's kind of loud. And so we have some trouble with that. And then in the winter, when it's really, really cold, same thing, blowing heat. So we sort of have to work around that. We try sometimes with the thermostat back here to either like pre-plan, like drop the temperature before the meeting so it's not blowing or warm it up before the meeting so it's not blowing. But anyways, I'm Rob Taylor. I am the land use and community development administrator. I am the support of this board as well as several others. And just want to welcome you. The reason I'm talking now is that this meeting is the meeting where we elect a new set of officers for the board. And so to get us started, I am calling the meeting to order and we are going to ask to elect a chair who can take over from here on out. So at this time, I will welcome nominations of a new chair from the floor. I nominate Dave Frack for chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. Any other nominations? I guess we would have to, if there's any other nominations, we would have a competitive election. But if there's no other nominations, we can go ahead and vote on David. All those in favor of David Frack as chair. And again, these are, this will be for, for the benefit of our new members. The full board members vote unless there's a vacancy of one of the full board members. And then elevate an alternate. But I think we've got everybody here today. One, we do. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. And so we can have a, we can have a vote and seven of you can cast your lot. So all those in favor of David Frack as your new chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Yes, I have it. I so declare. So David.
All right. Thank you. Next, we will open nominations for the vice chair. I nominate Dan Kylie for vice chair.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Tim Jennings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Congratulations, Dan. Another year.
Another year.
Our third officer is secretary. I'd like to nominate Tim Jennings.
Second.
Tim has been nominated and seconded by Dan Kylie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Congratulations, Tim. You are again secretary. We had new members, Ben Jorgensen as an alternate and Paul Bianco as a full board member. And what we usually do at this point in time is have a short around the table introduction just so we know who you are and you know who we are. I'm going to use my timer and set a limit of two minutes. You don't have to fill it. And let's start with Linda. Tell us a little bit about why you are on the board, your experience and where you live.
Well, I've lived in town over 50 years. I, I care a lot about Enfield and how it's developing and growing. And I'm on a Mescoma Valley Preservation Board and the Heritage Commission. And that was the third thing. What was the third thing?
Where you live?
I live on Route Four in Enfield.
Okay. Thank you. Eric.
Eric Russell. I moved to town in 2001 when Linda rented an apartment to my partner and I. And we're now in our third home we've owned in town on Maple Street. You'll see more of that tonight. And I started volunteering with the town, I don't know, it was 2018, 2019. Been on the budget committee, did the original municipal facilities committee. And I currently volunteer on the select board and I'm the ex officio member from the select board. Is why I'm here.
Okay. Dan.
Dan Kylie. I live on Shaker Hill Road. I have been on the planning board for probably about 20 years. I'm a past chairman and also am chairman of the CIP and a former member of budget committee. My wife was born here. I've been here since 1990 in the Upper Valley, since 1980.
Okay. I'm David Frack. I have been in Enfield since 2008 or 2009. Can't remember. I have been on land use boards for probably 22 years now. Most of them in Vermont. And been on this board since I think 2018 or 17, somewhere around there. I've headed up or co-chaired the master plan task force. And I'm glad to say that that effort has gone very well. We've got a great document, a great vision for the town. And hopefully as we do our zoning rewrite and other stuff, we will be able to slowly implement it. In my spare time, I'm also your state rep. Dan.
Yes, I moved here in 88, so I think that's 37 years ago. Live on May Street. And when I first moved here, I was the water and sewer operator and public works director for 10 years and then moved on. And been on the planning board, I think maybe this is my third year. Involved in various other things, but do enjoy the good work that's done here and a bunch of people to work with.
Great. Thank you. Nate.
Nate Miller. I live on Methodist Hill Road. So far other side of the town of Enfield across the interstate. I am a professional planner by trade and have been for 20 years in New Hampshire or so. I worked a decade here in the Upper Valley. And once upon a time was the circuit rider planner here to the town of Enfield. And so I sat in Rob's chair as a circuit rider once upon a time. For the last close to nine and a half years, I've been in Manchester. I work for the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, which is the, the MPO that serves the city of Manchester and 14 communities around Manchester. And so I drive up and down 89 every day. Get to see a different part of the state and work in a different part of the state. And it's been quite rewarding. But I, here in town, I, I served on the Johnston Drive Property Use Committee. I was the chair of that committee for, for its tenure. And we finished our work and our recommendations were implemented. And after that, I signed up to join the planning board a few months ago and have been enjoying it for the, for the past few months. So.
Good. Paul.
Well, first of all, I know you all look at me kind of strange, but I retired. My wife and I retired up here from Albuquerque, New Mexico. So you're looking at me like, what the heck did you do? Actually, the Upper Valley is quite a gem of a place to retire to. And if you ever want the calculations, I can give them to you. I became involved, maybe an acquaintance of the town's government through the Methodist Hill Project or some folks refer to it as Lot 29. I'm the president of the Fieldstone Ridge homeowners association, which is across the street. And so because of that, I actually read that master plan front to back because it became important for us to understand what the planning was for the town, not only for our far corner of Enfield, the town as a whole. And I thought it was very interesting to become part of the organization that does a lot of that planning and produced, you know, that wonderful document. And so I signed up for the, for the planning board and here I am. Thank you.
Welcome. Eric.
Sorry, my hots. I've been in Enfield 30 plus or minus years, somewhere in that range. Been on the planning boards, 15, maybe 20 years now. I'm really not sure when I'm coming out anymore. Been on the CBA, the zoning board of adjustment for a few years. And I was on the conservation commission for several years early on. Still very much interested in conservation projects. Don't think anything that involves nature, outdoors, stuff like that, that's my personal focus, I like to do. I like to do a lot of research on stuff, going through all documents and looking, reading through court cases that planning board related or anything that's land use related. And currently an alternate by choice. I travel, I'll be gone. Last few years, since I've been retired, we bought a small camper and we spend most of the summer in the fall traveling the country. So I'll be leaving, this year I'm leaving the first week of July. Won't be back until end of September, October.
All right. Ben.
Hi, I'm Ben Jorgensen. I've just moved into town last week, it feels like, based on everyone here. We've been here a couple of years. I live over in Lakeview at the lake there. I've got about 30 years of experience in campus facilities management, a lot of master planning and, and building development, construction and that sort of stuff. Seems like a good fit. So here I am.
Great. Bill, are you on?
Yes.
Hey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm Bill Griffin. I moved here in 2019. My wife retired and there was a house up the road from our family camp on Crystal Lake. So we moved up here, joined the planning board. I was just interested in learning more about our town and how things worked with it. So that brought me to here to be an alternate.
Okay. Whitney.
Whitney Banker. I am actually the recording secretary for now. And so since I'm here anyway, I've been an alternate. And I have lived in Enfield for eight years, but I'm from the Upper Valley. Formerly I was a registrar and soon I will be the librarian at the Enfield Village School.
Great. Yeah, Rob, you've already introduced yourself, so I will pass over you. Next, we have a continuation. I got everybody, didn't I? Yes. Continuation of P25-04-01. Eric Russell and Hannah Massakar are on day two of the hearing. If you will recall, the last time we heard them, there was a potential issue with a sideline and whether or not the parking area intruded into the setback or not. So Chris, do you want to tell us what you found?
Yeah, absolutely.
I could have just run through what, what I did.
Do we just, we, we need to ask the question again? Is it okay if there's only six for us?
Oh, yes.
All right.
That's right. Derek.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. A little background from Eric.
And actually, that's a good question on that one. Since I'm ex officio, it is technically a full board.
No, because we can't, we can't appoint.
But that's what I'm saying. Since you can't, you know, I wonder what the nuance is there? Because this is the maximum number that can hear a case or the ex officio member from the select board.
Right. But you've got an alternate.
No, no.
Yeah.
Either way, we don't have a problem.
Yeah, we don't have a problem.
Anyhow, I, I think we can proceed and for the benefit of Ben and Paul, Eric being our select board ex officio member, we cannot, he has his own alternate reported, appointed by the select board. And we cannot appoint somebody to fill the ex officio member seat. So.
It questioned, but has he recused himself?
Yes.
And therefore, has he recused himself as he withdrawn? So he could be replaced for his testimony by an alternate?
The only alternate allowable would be John Fluge, who is the alternate appointed by the select board.
Okay. That was a no.
Points of nuance. Yes.
Yeah, that's a no.
So when we left, we were trying to, we were trying to find the back pins along that back line. What we found originally was that the pin that I used to always hit my mower with was not there. Suspect that it was somehow moved when the water line was replaced. However, there was a development just today. So I called Scott Samborn, asked him if, if he could do anything. And I got home today at 5:45 to a row of stakes in my backyard where he had put it. And I haven't actually talked to him, but my wife did. So we have a row of stakes in our backyard. I think he put four in along what presumably he says is the boundary. The corner is where I expected it to be. So, but it sort of lines up. And then Chris can, so that's sort of where we are. We believe that we have that boundary now. Certainly, I don't, we don't have a survey drawing, but we have a surveyor who put stakes in the ground.
I just sent you something to project. So it'll give everybody a good visual because there's just like, it's much simpler that way. I'll just give the upshot of things. So originally we had designed four parking spaces, trash, snow removal, snow runoff, new gravel drive for a multi-family, for a three unit barn rebuild. The existing single family house will stay. The barn will be rebuilt as three rental units. The total number on the site is four. And so that's why we're here. The upshot of things is that we needed to narrow down the far more gracious than needed approach to the parking, which is a 24 foot aisle, and we need to go to 16. So it's essentially a driveway with a pit stop at the current barn or the rebuilt barn. And then that driveway continues back to access four parking spots. And Rob will put this up. And everything else stays the same. The trash is the same. There's still the driveway cut that we presented. They're still the same. Locations for plantings and screens and buffers. Same location for snow removal. All that is as presented last time. Once he brings it up, it's, and it's pretty self-approach. Or there's the existing. So we can go to page two. We'll just skip to that. So there we are. So the dimension that was checked was to the north boundary line where I wrote surveyor verified 54 foot seven. Ever take a few inches or an inch? Is. I'm going to do a quick thing here. Okay. To project it so they can get it, share it to people. So they can see it. You know, I can see. So yeah, 54 foot seven brings us to the edge of the prior barn. That's in dashed lines. The new barn edge would be back a little bit. But anyway, the important part is we need this for a parking layout now. And the driveway to be an extension off of the original drive. And we have provided four parking spots there. The total lot number would be, you know, five would, is easily done on this particular approach because we could park one in front of the barn. There's two garage spots inside. So we have, you know, not including anything on the driveway, there's six spots on this site now. So yeah, that's our findings.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on this revision? I hear none. Is there anything else that anybody wishes to bring up regarding the site plan review? Would somebody care to make a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the site plan review for, have you got this? P25-04-1, Eric Russell and Hannah Massakar.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paul, you were not part of the hearing, so I think you need to abstain.
I followed it.
Oh, you did?
Yes, I did.
There's a nuanced question.
Nope. He can, he can. It's today's vote, so he's here. He's a member today.
But even.
But.
Was a court case several years ago regarding that, this issue of a board member, regular board member not attending several meetings and then the final hearing, the presence and votes. And basically said, I followed the minutes, followed discussion. And then court says, well, you were informed.
So that was a regular board member?
Yes.
Paul was not.
Right, right. He wasn't present at the previous.
No, he wasn't present and he was not a board member at that time.
Right, yeah, yeah. But going forward, it's.
Going forward, definitely. Rob, do you have a?
He just abstained. He said he.
I can abstain.
Okay.
Just let him abstain.
All right. Yeah. Okay. All in favor? Who didn't vote?
Tim.
Where?
Just now.
When people said aye. Oh, okay.
He said aye. I didn't raise my hand.
Okay. So I, I think it is five and one abstention. Passed. Okay. Come on back to the table, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks for the time. Good to see you, Chris.
And Chris, thanks for a really good design and a good presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I thank you for the board's time.
I'll make a plug. Anybody who's looking for ADU sized units, he's got some really nice designs.
Okay. Renee, how much time do you anticipate tonight?
Not too much. My computer's currently frozen. So if you want to go ahead and update, since that's still on fine.
Let's in that case do that. Laramie Farms. Come on up, gentlemen. I want to explain for everybody's benefit that this is not a warned public hearing. This is a conceptual hearing. Anything that is said by the applicant or by the board is not binding. Here strictly to essentially kick around ideas, get an overview of the project. And there will be time for public comment at the end of the meeting. So having set those ground rules, why don't you folks introduce yourselves and tell us how you're related to the project and then dive into it.
Okay, I'm Stephen Dougherty, the owner of DC Development and Construction LLC. I'm affiliated with Johnny Di Petto, who owns the property right now. And we're going through a process to get this project approved through, hopefully. And with me, I have Al Dubay, who is our professional engineer. And he's been doing very good, got a lot of work done. And what we've done was we're successful with all the variance that was, that's what required for the project. We've obtained those. And now I think we're ready to go forward. But tonight, I think we wanted to come in and say hello. Congratulations on your new positions and, and your new election to be to the board and, and get this show on the road. And we're also looking for like some direction as to how you folks kind of want to see it laid out as we go forward, as we are planning on filing very soon for a regular, a regular public hearing. And then I thought what might be a neat idea. I have a shot video, which I don't think you people have ever seen. And it'll, it'll kind of be the introduction to the, to the new Laramie Farms. That's, is our vision. And we kind of wanted to show you that because it pitches like a, like a thousand words. Okay? And it's about a minute long. For me, it might feel like 20 minutes, but it's a minute long, maybe a minute 15 seconds. Okay? So we'll introduce you to the project that way, to Laramie Farms. We're going to go that one.
Right there.
Yeah, sidewalk.
I want to share with the people on teams. So we need to do a sharing. Now I can maximize. I think I can. Here we go.
We gave you a day and a night view. Show you that, uh, how the lighting will work at nighttime, but wouldn't be overbearing light, uh, flooding the area. Um, and that's kind of our vision of what the project will be. And if you look at the gable end of that apartment building, um, it's almost, uh, identical to the shape and design. Of your Shaker Museum building, because in the master plan, it talked about, you know, trying to fit it in. Uh, to what, what you have here in the town now, so we kind of took that gable end. And, uh, and we tried to broadcast that over here. Alright, and this particular video is done with, uh, the actual topography. And everything else that, uh, that is on, on the plans that we have. So I thought the architects did a pretty good job in explaining what the project would look like, so I thought we could look at it this way. And it would be a little bit easier, uh, we'll, we'll certainly hand these out, but, uh, that's. What we're envisioning the project will be, we're very proud of this project, we think it's going to be an award-winning project.
So, we do have, uh, plans and, uh, I apologize, there might be a little bit of gravel on them because I dropped them right outside the door out here. I backed them back up, there was a little bit of gravel on them. Thank you, apologize about that. Project's actually, uh, seventy-seven acres, seventy-seven acres and, uh. More than half of it will be actually an open space. And, and that open space would have probably some kind of a conservation easement, uh, deed on it. Uh, protective, um, when all the construction is done and everything, that can go back into conservation. So, this, uh, this, this plant set, uh. We don't have to go through every detail, but do I take them home and go through?
One more.
Oh.
He's got it.
Oh, okay, good. Uh, at the very end of this plant set, it's just a quick zoning overview. Uh, on the, the requirements and the zoning ordinance, it boils down pretty, pretty neatly actually now. Uh, so we have some criteria there, we can go through if you want. Uh, we also have some master plan. Information, and then the backside of the set, we have some old approved plans, this site was actually approved. As a open space subdivision years and years ago, it's actually on your tax map still. With, uh, it's only in, in main access off Maple Street and had a lot of wetland impacts, much more than we would have here. There was another approval, uh, also, uh, on this project, very similar to this, on the same tract. Uh, but it had a lot of problems, it had, uh, it was apartments. And it has some issues with, uh, e-brass, emergency e-brass and access and, you know, driving down several buildings with one throat. With, with no way to get out and dead ends and everything. So, uh, we, we fixed all of that and, uh, this project is feasible, so we basically have. Uh, primarily in the front eighty townhouse units, as you can see going, going up. And, uh, in the back, uh, two hundred twenty-two apartment units. The project has its main access on Route Four, and we've had meetings with the DOT already and. A lot of people were there, uh, you know, the Regional Planning Commission and Rob, uh, obviously and our traffic engineer and the DOT was happy with, uh. The scoping session that we had, said they're going to tell us what they want and how they want it and how much and all of that. Uh, and anything that we need to do on Route Four at the main entrance and they're, they're very happy. You know, they're talking all of that traffic and everything, so that would all be taken care of. We also have, uh. There's six townhouse units actually at the very end of Maple Street, we have frontage at the very end of Maple Street. And there, there would be, uh, one, uh, building there at the very end on our land, obviously, for six, six units. But all of that, all the rest would be in a conservation, uh, deed. So, the, um. We do have on the front sheet, it's just basically one, one page and, uh, but the second page is just blown up a little bit, so the. The first half of the project, you'll see there is, uh, the, uh, the main access off Route Four, which is on the left side of your sheet. And coming up, and we're actually going to provide a really nice, uh. Deeded driveway access, uh, to your existing water tower, that's right in the middle of our lot, um. And there's a bunch of deeds and needness for that, uh, we'll be, uh, we've already started work with the, your water consultant. As well as your sewer consultant, um, and, uh, whatever they tell us to do, we're going to do it. And, uh, that includes infrastructure improvements to that, uh, the, the lines up to that tank. Uh, also access improvements, so you, the town can get up there very easily now without going up a steeple, gravel driveway. Uh, room for them, room for the town to actually service that tank, uh, deeded access and everything. The video you saw actually had a lot of lawn, like big, 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 big slopes that were like perfectly mowed. A lot of those slopes actually would be, uh, in, in a, uh, naturalized, uh, vegetated planting program. So that would be, uh. Thrown in actually, so you, you won't see a lot of lawn, you'll see some lawn areas and, and the, the, the prime spots, obviously, on the project. Nodal areas and around people's entryways, but, uh. Almost all of this project is actually naturalized, so all those slopes would be brought back to natural. Uh, with, you know, indigenous plantings and everything and, and put back into the conservation easement. So we do have a, a road that goes all the way up, um, and it, uh. Actually, there's looping here, uh, so that, uh, the road access road goes all the way up the site. To a, uh, really a roundabout at the middle of the site, you can see that on the right side of the sheet. And then, so we have sort of a phased issue, which is an opportunity actually, so we have the townhouses on, on the, uh, first half of the site. And it's all circuitous, um, so people have ways to go, uh, in both directions and, uh. Really nice parking areas, these all have garages on them, they'd be very, very nicely appointed townhouses. All of that, so, uh, that, that's all taken care of, and then when we get to the second sheet, uh, you can see the same roundabout, but then there's three apartment buildings. Which you drove by. The video, and we can get around these buildings all the way, all the way around these buildings. And also underneath the buildings is a very nicely appointed, uh, parking garage. With, uh, you know, remote control and all that, so, uh. There will be primary spaces in there, about thirty-three, thirty-six spaces per building. Uh, so about half the units would actually have a protected garage, you can just drive in, it's protected. Stay warm, you stay cool or whatever and, um. Nice security and you can walk into an elevator and right up to your unit, we're very nicely appointed, uh, apartment units. Um, overall in the project, we have about one point six spaces per unit. Uh, your ordinance actually, uh, calls out for multifamily units, you only require one. Uh, but, uh, in our experience with, you know, projects and development and finance and everything. You know, usually around one point five is a sweet spot for this type of project. Um, but, uh, the, you know, we have plenty and what we show here on the project is the one point six. We also have a, an emergency access, uh, provision, um. And that would be basically a, a fire road, um, that connects to the rear of the project. Uh, all the way down the slope and all the way, uh, onto Maple Street, and that would be gated, the gated emergency access drive. That serves more, more than one purpose, not only for EMS a- access and safety, but also for utilities, uh, the sewer. And, and that type of thing, so that's all been pre-designed. Uh, the project will require a sewer permit, so we've already initiated that coordination with the sewer consultant that the town has. So we're not going to guess, uh, and then try to hope that they. Approve it and then it goes to the wastewater treatment plant for approval and then it goes to DES, uh, sewer bureau. Uh, we do a lot of these, uh, but, uh, usually if a town or city has a sewer consultant or a water consultant, we use. Them, uh, also, uh, right away, right off the bat, so sometimes, uh, they want certain things. Done a certain way because, you know, the sound better than anybody and the systems and we want to make it efficient. And that goes for the water too, so, uh. The water, uh, design, all, all those improvements, um, they'll meet all the NFPA requ- requirements, uh, we'll probably have to supplement. Uh, flow obviously here, uh, atmospheric and pressure and volume and all of that, this will be, uh, fully sprinklered. Buildings, uh, NFPA, um, thirteen. Uh, at least on the apartments, probably NFPA thirteen D on the, uh, townhouses. All monitored, alarmed, everything, you know, all state of the art. Uh, those systems are, uh, we're initiating that already, uh, the project also. As Steve mentioned, um. The elevations of the apartment buildings were just sort of modeled after the, the aspect ratio of the Shaker Village, like its stone building. Uh, in a, in a way there, so that some, you can see some of those cues. There's another page here with a bunch of orange on it, um. That's a slope summary plan, so as you know, you have a resource area, uh, ordinance. That includes wetlands and steep slopes and other things. The steep slopes have to meet the criteria and the sub-criteria on different areas and minimum, maximum slopes and everything. So all of that has been, uh, surveyed and fact-checked against, um. All the records and everything and we meet all of the criteria for that. Uh, so that plan spells out with all the spreadsheets, all of that, um. And then, uh, we get into, they basically had grading plans for the whole project, grading the, the utility plans. So we have a main access drive, you know, all the aisles are compliant, you know, twenty-four foot aisles, as you will. Imagine all the parking spaces meet your criteria. Um, as a matter of fact, I think your parking spec size spaces differ depending on where you look in the ordinance. Uh, uh, some are nine by eighteen, some are ten, ten by eighteen, some are ten, ten by twenty, nine by twenty. We're using ten by twenty spaces. Yeah, we're, so we're going into the, the bigger size, uh, you know. A lot of us had, you know, pickup trucks and things like that and it's just easier, uh, especially for multifamily and apartments, uh, we got. The bigger size, it's just a lot easier to maintain, um. Winter maintenance, uh, you know, we have extra snow storage areas, obviously, with the, all these spelled out, so all of that is there. Um, the lighting design, as Steve mentioned, would be, you know, dark sky friendly and all that, it would be done by a real lighting designer with real photometrics and real. specification, um, the, uh. The special exception is in place, uh, the variance is in place. Uh, we're in the R-one district, this, you know. Density calculations on all of that, we meet all of that criteria, we meet all the structure setbacks. Uh, there's a perimeter, uh, buffer setback which we meet, obviously, um, all of those things that you would normally expect. So on the grading utility plans, uh, we do show the, uh. We probably have more drainage on this site than we need, but we want to embed that into the design on this site because it's on the side of a slope. With high water tables, so. There's actually a positive that comes out of that because our differential pre and post drainage, uh, flows are, are. Very, very good actually, uh, but we have a lot of basins, a lot of wet ponds. Um, a lot of pretreatment. And we even have areas for, uh, in our fill sections where we can do storm techs and a whole bunch of other things if we really needed to for extra treatment. So this, this project will fall under the AOT permit criteria, so we'll need an alteration of train permit from DES. Uh, we do, most of our projects need AOT permits and, uh, we work very, very closely with the Bureau. Uh, they just updated their regular again, they just came out with a new stormwater manual, which is a really pretty read down, so. They really up that a lot and all the criteria there, um. All the calculations, all that stuff is underway right now and all those, all those slopes, all that topo is, would basically be re-vegetated. Into a naturalized, uh, system. So we do have several ponds throughout the site, uh, to, to inter- intercept water and all of that and manage it with. All sorts of extra capacity. For the most part, um, almost all of the driveways are all curved and, uh, closed drainage. Uh, we just don't want a lot of stuff spilling out over into the things and, you know, making a mess and everything, so it's all very, very nicely appointed. You know, a, a higher-end apartment project that you would normally like to see, uh, townhouses. Um, at the central, uh, roundabout area, we, we. We're probably putting, you know, in a, a pickup drop-off area, uh, maybe a bus stop for, uh, the transit. Steve has been working with the transit people from, uh, the different major employee employer, medical and university type. Um, the, uh, the emergency access drive, uh, that's gated, that goes down to Maple Street is, uh. Uh, is a nice feature to walk on, um, you know, and we hope that the residents engage with the town and I know they will actually and. Get into downtown and, you know. Um, patronize those businesses and that type of thing. So we have full access all the way around the site, uh, we have the garages underneath the apartment buildings, we also have, uh, there's a site section here. Uh, when you go into the plans, um. And you, you can see how we're actually building, so it's really a cut on one side and a fill on the other and it balances out pretty well. We will need a wetland impact, uh. Uh, permit and, uh, we're starting that work already, um, we've actually taken the, the amount of wetland impact on this project. And substantially reduced it, we worked, uh, closely with the Conservation Commission in, in the conceptual phase and we'll be working with them again. In, uh, later phases, uh, but they gave us a lot of input on this and, uh, we worked this out, uh, it works out very well. Almost all of our wetland impacts are actually just up, up and down the sides of the slopes that are fingers of wetland that. With the C on it, we're going to intercept all of that, so we don't want any drainage coming down beyond our pre-imposed, uh. Uh, design points, obviously, we won't have any extra flow at all and all of that be held back and, uh. There was some comment from the town that they, they want to make sure that we equalize the flow and as part of our allocontrol structures, we can do that, we can adjust those. We don't want to totally take off all the flow because people said, well, there's a, a resource area across from Maple Street. We want to make sure we feed that as well, we don't want to dry anything up, so we'll equalize all of that. We're working on Maple Street right now, looking at everything and all the drainage and cross culverts and everything, we don't want to overload those or anything, so all of our drainage would be intercepted. Uh, before that, so we will be, uh, working with the Wetland Bureau on that. They're going to like, uh, this project, um, we do many of these where they, they like to see, uh, offsetting mitigation. We have plenty of mitigation, so more than half of our project is actually, it will be in open space and conservation. That's a really good thing, they, they really, really want us to see that type of thing. Uh, so you'll see the sections on, on there, on the project, um, it, it all makes sense. Um, the slopes are primarily, uh, in the drainage areas, you'll see it's just a AOT requirement. In drainage areas, you usually see a three-to-one slope, all vegetated, naturalized. On normal fill or cut slopes, you see a two-to-one slope, that's all be naturalized, you could technically mow it, but we don't mow it, we want to keep it naturalized. We have some sections that are about a one and a half to one, uh, stabilized engineered vegetated slopes. Like you would see on a DOT and then we plant, you know, wildflowers and that type of thing. Uh, so we did start the drainage modeling, uh, we were asked to make sure that we're balancing our flows and getting those assigned correctly. With our several ponds, all, all up and down the project and, uh, we're doing that right now. Uh, so, uh, we also have the pre-design on the sewers, uh, they all meet state and town criteria, uh, they're all done. You know, very, very well, we're not cheapening out on any system or anything, you know, when you get to this level of a, a project, it really needs to be. Heavy-duty stuff and, you know, DOT quality, um. Your regulations actually suggest that and we, we would do that anyhow, obviously, so. That's sort of a, a real quick ten-minute nutshell, I hope I didn't go over ten minutes, maybe I did, but. Um, a lot going on in the project and we're very happy, uh, moving forward on it, our, our office in Laney Dairy. We have a full service, uh, you know, full survey. Um, full engineering, uh, drainage, sewer design, uh, landscape architects on staff. Um, virtual reality, uh, we do a lot of that, Steve's architect did that one. Um, and planning, you know, on staff and look forward to working with this board and, you know, so we had to do a lot of homework just to get. Hit a point where we are because. Usually a board will ask a lot of questions, well, how about this, how about that, how's that grid going to look and, you know, oh, we haven't gotten there yet, you know, but we have actually, we needed to. We needed to with the Conservation Commission, we needed to with the DEA. And, uh, we look forward to, um, moving, moving forward, uh, high quality and positive, uh, environment.
Okay. Um, I have one question to start it off. Uh, your cover page. My recollection is that there were three lots as part of the property. Are all three lots. Covered in this big overview or is there more land that's not shown?
There's no more land.
Okay.
Yeah, thi- this, this was it, the seventy-seven acres, um, there were some subdivision plans that were put together and. Some stuff got recorded, some stuff didn't, it never, it never got built. Uh, but there, there, I think there are, John, there might even be more than one lot already existing, but, uh, they would be consolidated and resubdivided. Uh, basically, uh. We could probably do one lot over here on the townhouse soon, so we can just leave it as one big site plan, it really doesn't matter. This will be a private, uh, before there was some public roads contemplated and the town was going to have to maintain all that stuff and everything else that goes with it. So we actually did a, a private development, so this would all be privately maintained, the town would not have to touch it. Uh, it would be done by, you know, the, um. Vendors that, you know, experiencing that and, you know, everything from the green, green snow pro certifications to. Everything, so all the infrastructure on this whole site would be private and privately maintained. Uh, all that stuff would be bonded, you know, uh, everything would have to be up to snuff, landscaping, lighting, everything forevermore. Uh, because that's all part of the approved site plan, so if there are any violations, it would be a site plan violation which the town can sink its teeth into, but. I, you know. I'm not in business of working for developers that violate stuff, uh, we don't do that, Steve's top notch and. Been working, you know, in, uh, New Hampshire and, and. And, uh, Massachusetts very successfully and, uh. So it'll be a top quality project, but the town doesn't have to be spending its time out there, resources, maintaining stuff.
We currently show it as two lots, Carl, on our tax plans?
Yeah, I think that's right.
So, one question I had is, is, I mean, do you have any intention of merging these two lots so we don't have to worry about setbacks between the two? Yep.
That, that's correct.
So that would be an application with these guys for voluntary merger?
Yes, there would be a, and.
Want to subdivide or whatever.
Correct, and the, the plans would actually show all of that, um, eh, with that merger and. We could actually do that with a voluntary merger with, you know, the attorneys and the assessor and. And that type of thing, and, and the planning board could actually as part of their conditions and, you know, require it and we would actually. Obviously do that. There'll be some easements on this project also that the town can benefit from, we're going to be expanding your access easements and water tower easements. So you have a little bit more elbow room out there to do what you need to do. Uh, we're also going to be replacing a lot of stuff out there. Uh, connecting into the water tower, so all that will be new and, uh, you know, all, uh. And then all, all the front door improvements and any improvements that are required on Route Four would also be done, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The whole, okay. Um. So I just put, I put some, uh, notes down here, I just want to more or less read these. Just to clarify my thinking and. Get a couple of key points on, on, on the record. So. We're being asked tonight to, uh, comment on, offer informal advice. And suggestions regarding the project. And we did this once before in twenty-eight September in twenty-twenty-two. And the project as presented tonight is a significant departure in scale and design from back then for lots of reasons. So it's appropriate and proper, I think that we consider this as a wholly new one. Whatever we may have commented back then doesn't really apply today. Um. And by the same token, whatever you promised back then doesn't necessarily apply to that, in my opinion. So I'm, I'm grateful that the applicant, that you folks have asked for this conceptual hearings, but I think it will both help. You and the town better prepare for the formal hearing process that this project will be subject to. And at first I wanted to acknowledge that this project, as you know, has caused much discussion among the residents of the town simply because of its size. And the project required, and as you mentioned, was granted typical zoning variances that one would expect. Wetlands crossings, for example, and, and one rather controversial variance for building height. And I only mention this because I wasn't sure how many people would be in attendance tonight, that sort of thing, but there's a point I wanted to make about that. Which, uh, this particular variance, the building height variance, will result in three buildings being constructed that are taller. Actually larger than the other structure in town. When the zoning board of adjustment, not this board, but the ZBA. Uh, granted these variances, which were subsequently upheld in court. And thus declaring in the viewpoint of the ZBA, I think you could surmise that the project is a net positive to the town. Now, by doing that, the zoning board has removed this topic from further consideration by this planning board. We cannot revisit these issues, nor we can talk about the pros and cons of the project. Um, the proposed development. In some form or another, this project is going to go forward. Assuming you folks follow through on your forms. But I think we do need to talk about the general scale of the, of the project, not as a matter of approval or disapproval, but just as context. For the significant impacts this project will have on the village and the town. This will be the largest housing project the town has ever been presented with. And we need to keep the following factors in mind, this may be. Uh, uh, abuse to you and a understanding, perhaps some of the white people are. Are talking about your project. The population of Enfield Village is about fifteen hundred people, and that's just the village, this area here kind of outlined in that blue top. Um, so it's not the town as a whole, but the population of the village is about fifteen hundred. The reason I point that out is, uh, the village. Or the project is so close to village, it essentially is going to become part of the village. The rest of the town will be impacted to some extent, but not to the extent the, the village wills. So, the development will add about and correct the numbers here if I've got this wrong, with five fifty to six hundred residents, if three hundred units are built. And we're using one point eight people per unit, which is our town. Apparently that's the number the census determined. Now that's a thirty-seven percent increase in the village population. Well, that's a tremendous increase in residents in any community. Particularly since it will happen essentially overnight. Now you haven't talked to us about what your phasing plans are, but I assumed the two-year construction period, which is why I said overnight. That's, that's a quick, a quick growth of a town. I'm not aware of any community in the state facing such an increase in residents so quickly. Now because of the size, the project will necessarily have an effect on, and you've mentioned a number of them, automobile traffic, pedestrian movement, water and sewer utilities and so forth and so on. So it's for all these reasons, we have to pay careful attention to the details of how this project will be built. Projects like this can be done right. Minimizing, mitigating, and adequately addressing impacts. Or they can be done wrong or partially wrong, causing all sorts of unintended consequences. As a board, I think we owe it to our citizens, the applicant, and the eventual occupants of these new homes to see it is done right. Therefore, um, we cannot approach our consideration of the project off the cuff, we'll forethought study, I'm sure we, we're not intending to do that. But what I'm suggesting here is it's going to take the full attention of each member of this board. And careful evaluation of each and every impact issue and feature of the project. We need to take the time, do the job thoroughly and professionally. And I'm sure that you folks want your project to be a success and widely accepted by its neighbors. Hopefully tonight we can have a productive informal discussion towards those aims. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Uh, anyone else have any comments or questions on what we've heard so far? Just Linda.
I didn't see on your access road any sidewalks. Are, are people going to have any sidewalks to walk up and down the hill?
I think so.
Uh, there's, there's, uh, we looked at sidewalks for two reasons, um, or two routes. One, one would be going down to Route Four. Uh, Route Four. Doesn't have any sidewalks on it, um. Cars go, you know, pretty quickly wrapping around through there and they're just trying to get from one end of town to the other and. Uh. So, uh. We have the room for a sidewalk, but there's really, I, we don't think anyone would use it in walking all the way down to the road, then what would they do when they land on Route Four?
Take a bus.
Oh, what's that?
Take a bus?
Right, well, we actually have been working, um. On the bus routing and we believe that the safest way is for the bus to come to the center of the project. And then there's a, a, a roundabout there with a nice, you know. Safe area and it's in between, you can see it in the middle of the project, it's in between the townhouses and the apartments, where they all come together, it's a one central node. And it'd be a protected bus area there, and for anybody, you know, doing rideshares or, uh, Ubers or, you know, any of that stuff. So we thought that the bus, buses would be most likely wanting to go to the central area, it just feels good, there's enough of a. You know, um, a demand there for that and ha- instead of having everyone walk all the way down the tail. To land at the bottom of the road, uh, with no modal, no node, no, no, no place to. Of, of safety, no feel, no good feel. If you're in the project and it's a big enough project, the buses, you know, we can coordinate that for them to actually come, come to this. So that, that's what, what we had planned, we do have sidewalks around, you know, through the apartments and everything, uh, as needed. Uh, people could take, you know, walk down the, uh. Emergency access, uh, drive, that's all gated, uh, that's basically a, oh, you know, like a fire road, an old fashioned fire road.
Are you going to plow it in winter?
Yes, that, that would have to be plowed in the winter and maintained as an emergency access. Uh, we thought that's the right thing to do and, 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 and working with the fire chief. He really strongly suggested that we do that. And we needed it for our utilities anyhow, and there were previous approvals on utilities for a road there. Actually, it was going to be the main project road of one, one of those designs. But we're, it'll be gated, it'll be for the utilities and, you know, people to do walks, I'm sure on the rest of the. The, the conservation areas, you know, we can put in trails or all of that too, there's lands beyond this, as you know, so all that could be integrated.
I'd like to piggyback on that notion though, I, I, I was actually surprised there weren't a sidewalk provided. On the main access road up to a certain point anyway that, um. And I was thinking that. What makes sense is once you get to Route Four is the sidewalk. Continue that along Route Four till it meets the existing town sidewalks, I think that's. Four or five hundred feet. Uh, uh, along Route Four. And. I think the. Living in the village and seeing what people want to do in terms of walking. Um, I think you're going to have a lot of residents that want to go downtown. Rail trail, so forth. Um. And. As it stands right now, walking up from Route Four, once you get past the new car wash at Flanders Street here, that's like. Uh, is iffy, it's, it's scary, and I've done that a number of times and. I think. I just feel like you're, you're going to have a lot of your residents. In that kind of situation. Currently coming up to Maple Street, well. Just extended that walk to get downtown, maybe it'll be a loop for folks, but I, I would certainly. Hopefully continue the discussion about sidewalk.
Yeah, and I'll piggyback on that, I would also highly encourage thinking about. Integrating into the village by having sidewalks down, you know, the Flanders Street. But there's, there's a group that you haven't thought about yet, which is, uh, students. The school bus stop will be down on Route Four, it's highly unlikely that the school would drive the bus up to a bus loop. Um, and I say that, so I live on Maple Street and like they don't run a bus up Maple Street. So, and they don't run buses up side roads off of Route Four, everyone comes down to Route Four to get on the bus. But it's highly likely that the school bus stop would be on Route Four, both in the morning and evening. Um. So that, so there would be a population there, and then also. Those, those bus that like to walk our kids to the school, that would definitely be the shortest path. To the school would be to go down the main entrance and then down Route Four.
So we'll, we'll look, we'll, we'll look at that.
So I would highly encourage, and those is, that's a great way to integrate into the village and, and sort of the culture that exists in the village of people walking around and, and whatnot, um.
Okay, um. One more thing on sidewalks. I'm not seeing any within the developed area, so perhaps on the next iteration. Of the planned sidewalks would be indicated, or do, do you have them on a different sheet?
Uh, give me a second. So working backwards, uh, all of the apartments, tho- those three buildings are fully. Provided with sidewalks all the way around the buildings and, you know, uh. Serving the parking and also the, the entrance.
The, uh, you want to look at this page?
Page three also.
Yeah, so, so we do have, I walked around all the apartments, everything, full, fully walked, uh, uh, the townhouses. Um. We did not put sidewalks on the townhouses, uh, but we do have. We do have room, um. There's, uh, those garages, those driveways that go into the garages, those are deep. Sometimes you'll see a plan, it's, you know, it's only eighteen feet from like the, the back flow line of the aisle and to hit the garage door, you know. So everyone's back of their cars and stuff sticking out in the aisle, that's, that's not here, we, we actually pre-designed all this, so. We have at least twenty-five feet minimum. Um, between a garage door. And the flow line. Which could certainly, you know, we, we could integrate some walkways into the townhouse development so that, uh, there's wayfinding. Uh, there's some curb lines there that, uh. We can make that work, I think. But, I mean, uh, we, we thought that you might be asking for it and then we're. Drawing stuff up, we had it kind of worked out and planned if we needed to do it, and we didn't want to give it away or anything, but, uh. For instance, the main access drive, that shoulder, uh, one of those shoulders is widened up where we could actually. Put the walkway, we didn't want to redesign it for that, so it's just a widened shoulder, but certainly could, uh, accommodate that.
Uh, another question.
Are you, or are you going a different direction?
No, I'm sticking with pedestrian. Um, well, pedestrian and parking. Is there a reason why what I guess I would call guest parking is between, I'll just show it to you. Between. Block one and block two versus more central?
Right, uh, so.
What was the rationale?
Uh, on townhouses, um. Where we can fit extra parking that's efficient so that we're not, you know, blowing out extra, you know, resource areas. Um, we like to disperse that parking, especially around townhouses. Instead of having one central parking lot for townhouses, uh, if there's a ribbon access way, we're probably going to have a walkway. Uh, and you can see the shoulders on there, it was like pre-designed for walks. Um, then we would have these little pods, you know, six spaces here, six spaces there, where we can just stupid them. So we're not asking people to walk, you know, from one end of the townhouse development all the way to the other if you're visiting a friend or something. Uh, you know, it, it spreads the, the loadout and the convenience, so we usually. Spread those pods of parking out amongst the townhouses.
Yeah, but that's not what your plan shows.
Uh, well, we have, uh, so each townhouse unit is a, a garage.
Two spaces.
Plus the space in front of the garage, which is two spaces, and that's private, no one else can use those, that's your own. Yeah, talking about these, yeah, and then we have open parking, uh, just extra, just because we can.
I, I don't know for sure, but that may be where the power line is.
Uh, yeah.
So maybe they put the parking under the. That's why it's not.
Yeah, that is, that is the.
That's the answer, Dan.
Oh, that, that's, yeah, you're absolutely right, sir, that's because we couldn't. Could not put built townhouse under the power line easement, but we could put the parking there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, it, it worked great that way.
Would, would you be considering possibly some more dispersed guest parking? Um, it does seem like an awfully long hike from the parking lot. The guest parking lot under the power line. All the way to the, let's say, the last townhouse closest to the central traffic circle.
Well, we do have, uh. So on the townhouses, we have two point three parking spaces per unit. Which is, you know, pretty generous, um, so like we mentioned, we have two spaces per unit that are fully protected, private.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then we have, uh, an additional twenty-four guest spaces, a hundred and four. Uh, and then we have uh an additional twenty-four guest spaces, a hundred and four spaces total. Um, I mean, I'd hate to have to put in a big parking lot somewhere. I mean, we could even put another barrel of parking under the power line easements if we needed to. We could, um
maybe suggesting of up these around a little bit more. But this guy here doesn't actually walk all the way to there.
It it's a, yeah, there there's actually, uh we have this cur- curved linear um driveway that accesses to the water tower also. And we could even put, you know, on that end of the development, to your point, we could put spaces there as well. Uh, we don't have any spaces shown there. We could put some there.
What what is the distance then from the power line easement to the central traffic circle?
It is, uh, I have to look for plan to.
Ballpark.
Ballpark is and put the stations on here, but um
You don't have stations.
Uh we do have them in in the other plans, but uh it's it's probably, you know, three hundred feet.
That could be a lo- that could be a long walk on a cold winter night.
I would take an Uber.
Good luck getting one in.
Oh, really?
So we, there is uh around the cul-de-sac, there there is uh some air opportunity areas there to actually extend the parking on the apartment side, uh, which is, we we would have sidewalks wrapping around that that uh roundabout, and then there's opportunity areas right there for parking that on that end for for the townhouses as well. We could add more and we didn't know uh so some planning board members, they don't like any parking. And in others, they want, you know, uh a lot of spaces per unit. We didn't know where you're gonna land on that, uh, but uh we 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 can add more parking spots in there that's more servicing, uh, and get those ratios up if you want for the townhouses.
How many townhouse units either?
Uh, over there, there's eighty.
So there's twenty-four guest spaces then, if you do it two point three already. I don't think you're gonna see more than twenty-four guests at one time.
Right, and they're, you know, they're they're townhouses, they're they're not huge, but they're 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 listed as two-bedroom townhouses. Many people, the they're singles and they'll just have an office.
Right.
We expect there's there's probably gonna be a lot of people that wanna live here that are quiet and professional and they there's not a lot of people in them. Very, uh, in our experience with this type of development, there's not a lot of school kids that come out of them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but uh still, you know, they're not party central or anything like that. They're very quiet and uh but uh to your point, even though we have twenty-four, even if we have two point three as a ratio, you know, we can bump that up to two point five and then add more dispersed to to your point, uh, Mr. Chair. Dispersed throughout so you don't have such a long walk and also provide the sidewalk amenities, so that's not a problem. If you actually look at the townhouse driveways, even on the wet, the two wetland crossings we have, you'll see that we had a panel there for an extra sidewalk here, so we wouldn't have to redo do that. That's good room.
Okay. Um when your residents have things like boats and maybe a camper, trailer, whatever, uh, you providing any sort of storage lot for that, even if it's just grass?
We did talk at one time about up in up in this space here to come off of this with some parking area. Um, but I think through conservation, and that get mixed.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we 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 were looking at an area there, but I I don't know. Right, out out there, and we could cut and fill, it'd be a slot that you could technically. It it gets into a lot of management issues and say, uh you know, um security. Do we fence it? Are we are we responsible? Does someone want, you know? I mean, the townhouses do have a small garage, you can put a little kayak in there, uh, but I mean, if you're gonna run a fishing boat with a motor and all that other stuff and a trailer and everything else, and how do you we we really don't want to ask our residents to be managing their own trailers and boats and equipment uh on this rental property. We wanna keep it clean. Uh, I I I think there are opportunity areas and then field and some of the other lakes around the area that, you know, someone could do that and pay for it, uh, store somewhere else, a facility that's made for it. Uh it was just getting too much. We thought that it would be too onerous.
And the garages and the townhouses, they're actually big enough to hold a a regular-sized automobile. It's not big enough to hold a kayak. It's a
Yeah.
It's it's a real garage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there the
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
No, finish finish up.
Yeah, the pedestrian, um issue. Um. You you won't know this, but there's a major hiking trail that comes down the ridge in Moose Mountain that that comes more or less like this. And um there's no good way to access that trail on the Route four end of it. There's plenty of parking up on the northern end of it. And uh, and I handled it. And I've had an informal discussion with at least one property owner and they're indicating, some indication that they might be interested in this, but I'm, I guess I'm just suggesting that if you guys and that property owner had a discussion and it was felt, then maybe that the property owner would be willing uh to have that trail connect into your property. And then if that further, what would be really helpful is this down here on your access drive. If instead of putting the gate down maybe at the at the foot of the hill, it came up into your property somewhere and allowed for three or four parking spaces on the town side of the gate. A place that perhaps could be then advertised as the parking site for an hiking trail.
I I use the gate part. Is the gate at the Route four entrance?
No, 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 the gate would be off of Maple Street.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'll I'll just comment on that. You won't see it on a trail map, but the new logging roads already connect that trail to Maple Street that people do cross your property currently.
Yeah.
I I like if you go, you'll, if you start walking around, you'll find where where people are using the logging roads to walk.
Typically. On open space subdivisions or bigger projects like this with conservation areas, we would uh bake into the conservation deed that the town attorney reviews and you guys review the provision that you could do it, uh, and we would not withhold that. Uh we just have to be cognizant of, you know, wetland impacts and all of that. There's a lot of
Liability.
You know, liability. So there'd be indemnification. Uh, m- many towns, you you may or may not already have this, you know, like there's like a trail easement boilerplate uh over private property that might provide some interconnection. And that's all vetted out very well with conservation selectmen, you know, the planning board, the attorneys. Uh, we wouldn't have any objection to that. We just uh, wanna make sure we're not putting in like a a parking lot for a hundred hundred cars or something that we would have to it it would would put us over the top in terms of some permit issues. But if there is some reasonable accommodation that we can make for any of those, you know, the Maple Street example, the Maple Street connection is via a right-of-way easement, and that easement only has a certain width. Uh, but uh, you know, it's wide enough for a road and everything. Uh we just don't wanna get into an issue where, you know, the town wants to put in a big parking lot over there and maybe some of the residents don't wanna do that. But we would normally be very amenable to interconnections on trails and all of that. And as trails morph and they mature, things start popping up, you know, we'll go out and drone them or GPS them and, you know, get them on the plan. So all that that thing, that that's what people have been using lately. Oh, okay, well, and they wanna go over there. So sometimes a a trail easement that would hook onto someone else's property, private, we can't control that, but at least we can at least provide you the ability to do that with signing off, you know, on easements and indemnification, but, you know, we can't go onto someone else's property and coerce them to do that, but that would be at least how we link good trail networks together, but at least we'll we we would do our part. Yeah, that that's perfectly fine.
What I meant by parking perhaps where that orange dot is, is that in town of Hanover, the o- other end of this trail, the parking lot there, I'm guessing probably allows about six vehicles to park there.
Yeah, I think that's a gravel lot. It's probably doable. That's just a big crushed stone area there now and um there's
Real informal.
You know, if if the town uh puts spearhead that, we would accommodate it. You know, we just don't wanna upset anybody. But, you know, we definitely like the idea of interconnecting trails and people love that. Sure.
Um. It's oh, several questions. There was just comments. On the on the trail bit, uh, where you have your six townhouses, looks like you own a strip of land that come down into Maple Streets. Um, also on Maple Street views. And I believe that's actually an open from an old previous logging operation. Cause when way back when the original Flowermeat Farm Iron Man projects were happening, I was walking up through there and that may be a means to create a trail network that's Tim was talking about. Um, also, and as way, and you won't be going around houses. It will be more secluded type of access. And it'd be just going across the easement area.
Yeah, and again, if if there's an opportunity area, then and it and it makes sense to you guys, sure, I mean I think that area is a wetland, technically it's a wetland, but sometimes it's obvious, sometimes you would know, right? Right, and we would just leave it alone, keep it natural, but there there could be an interconnection nodal point there.
Mm-hmm.
And yeah, there's no issues as long as the legal work on the easements were worked out.
Right, uh, and then back to the split only on the sidewalk bit. Even if on your road network, if you had a painted line that's was a sort of like when you're driving, it looks like, oh, you don't cross the white line, but it's a bike-walking side area without having a raised curb sidewalk and all that fancy stuff.
You know.
It was just something like that.
I see. We've done that in uh in Plastow.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, and we, they made us paint a line and we have to put down there, you know, like bike path. So they can walk and bike path
Yeah.
down there. They didn't want the sidewalks. They wanted to have that line of the five, it was five feet.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the width there is
Yeah.
Whatever.
We have done that another.
I'm just thinking in terms of instead of having a raised curved sidewalk, even like some of the state roads when you was just going down to anywhere was, um, and it was they just, when they redid it like ten years ago, they put in a a bike lane. Cause they had the right right of way and you just it was, it works.
Yeah.
It makes sense. You're plowing in the winter.
Yeah, yeah.
Not having to.
Yeah, right. And then, um, I just got some quick questions here. On the Route four access, you're working with the state, obviously. Um, you have um any timeline on that on permits?
Uh, they uh, we we had the required scoping meeting. And uh, that that takes time. And then they uh basically gave us our marching orders of what they would be expecting and how they would want this traffic study to be done and where to count and everything. So we really, uh, we're gonna start right away on that, but we wanted to at least kick off this meeting with the planning board, just, you know, Bob, you know. The the planning, uh, the regional planning commission's involved also, they're all involved. Uh, so we're we're ready to get started on that right away and the timing on that, it really depends on the the on the permitting, it decide, it really depends on the warrants and what we need to do on Route four and all the interfaces and everything, what we just talked about. Uh, this project could be phased, um, at least for construction and just bringing units on board. To your point, you know, we're not gonna bring them all on board, you know, instantly. Uh, this could be phased in two phases. It could be a townhouse phase. Even townhouse could be split into two or three phases. And then the apartments as well. So we're looking at all that and discussing that with the DOT. Uh, so all the i- infrastructure will be in place as expected for anything prior to any CO of, you know, any particular unit.
Yeah. And um, the Route four, is it gonna be using the current water tower, what's currently there with the gates? Is that where the right-of-way you're gonna use? Are you gonna be, is it your your?
Would come and light up that actually.
Okay, so that is the physical website location, yes. Yeah, okay. Um, these trees, you're talking about.
That'll all be rebuilt.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, but that's where the entrance is gonna be, yeah.
Generally.
Yeah, so when I'm driving by and I look over and they say, okay, that's where it is.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah. Um, the building heights, I know the ZBA granted you um the variance for your building heights. Um, their their motion to approve was I wasn't happy with the wording. Um, personally, it was it was pretty wide open. Um, so all all what height are the all the buildings going to be? I know when you went to the ZBA, you were talking townhouses, but the motion was like it.
We've talked about both buildings, uh, the apartment buildings and the uh, and the farmhouse buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And in in the way your ordinance is written today, that any any colonial-style home with a garage under would need a variance for height because it exceeds your maximum height.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of communities, they do the 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 way they measure the height would be from the average grade to the mean of the roof. Uh, in in your community, you go from the lowest point to the highest point.
Mm-hmm.
So because of that, we need to have variance for the townhouses as well. And then the apartment building as well.
So what, so what height are you currently proposing?
Uh, well, the townhouses are basically two stories, but they're walkouts or walkups.
Yeah, so they're they're probably around thirty-five, thirty-six feet. Typical colonial
Okay, I'm just.
With a garage under, yeah.
I guess.
But because it was over, it was over the your threshold.
Right.
We just, we just let it go with the with the apartment size as well.
E- even with like if you're building a regular house in Enfield, if you have a walkout basement and you got two stories plus a a a robust roof, not not a flat roof.
We're currently
You're actually over the
In our rewrite of our zoning base, where that's one of the things we're
Yeah.
currently looking at, it's just that when you've got your variance approval, it was seventy-five feet for all buildings on your lot.
Correct. Yeah, that's not the case.
Yeah, that's.
So to ask my question is
Yeah, that's.
What are you planning to do?
The the uh, the the we went to that height uh for the uh, the apartment buildings
Yeah.
cause of the garage under.
Yeah.
Uh, and then for the for these buildings, I think they're they're approximately thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And the apartment buildings are four four levels. We do a lot of apartment buildings at four levels. The ticker buildings at four levels. And then the the upper level, it has some optional lofts and then some some very, very nice units in there in the top level so that that but, you know, we do have a pitch roof on the apartment buildings. We could have just done a flat, but town really wanted a pitch roof. As Steve mentioned, the the underground parking, which is a huge amenity, people just love those. And they'll pay extra for them. And it also keeps our footprint over overall condensed, cause we get a lot of parking under the building. That's that, because we're cutting in and doing a, you know, a garage door, kind of like a little parking garage on.
No, I always, my just, my only
Yeah.
good question was what is the height of the other buildings going to be?
Yeah, and and those are all
That was just my
Those are documented, so that the ZBA can't basically pointed to the documents, so they, the documents did show differential, townhouse and the apartment building.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um, and you're stating the road network's gonna remain private, um, that would be stamped on the plan, so ten years, twenty years from now, some new owner hires your projects and says, I want the town to take it over and
Good luck to him.
Yeah, I remember it's in the D, you know, D did stamps.
Yeah.
Plans.
Yeah.
Sorry, no.
There's standard language for that, that most towns will actually put on, as you know, probably with with the registry filing, that your standard sentence is that we have to put in there that's like case law. So that there's there's no indication of, no inclination that that would change. It has to be recorded at the registry.
Yeah. It's just, like I said, twenty years from now, things, people change. Um, easements, uh, the easements, would that be a third party, not the town holding the conservation easements?
We've done it many different ways. Uh, a lot of times we ask the town what they like first.
Mm-hmm.
And then that mesh that in, what you would prefer and what Stephen would prefer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've done, uh internal covenant easements that are basically our responsibility. Uh, there could be easements to the town of Enfield.
Mm-hmm.
Uh there are some cases where we would do a third-party uh oversight easement through uh uh, you know, like similar to the Southeast Land Trust, you know, the these tr- land trusts.
Yeah, the Southern Upper Valley Land Trust.
Okay, so you have an Upper Valley, so
Yeah.
you're probably familiar with that.
I'm familiar with them, so.
Oh, there you go. So uh, we do those third parties as well, and you know, they provide, they they require like a an escrow and everything, and then they, they're a watchdog, basically.
So it's the thing with an easement, if there's nobody willing to enforce it, it's, doesn't really mean any, it's not worth the paper it's printed on type of situation, where with the town, it's like, that's puts a burden Where with the town, it's like, that's puts a burden on the town to enforce the easements if there's a violation.
The third party, uh, solves that issue, as you know, and that's why it works really well. And we've done a lot of those and it's really in the writing of the deeds as well, so, cause they're gonna be a third party. You know, check and balance, which is great. Uh, and, uh, just the legal work that is involved in that, there's boilerplate for that. Sometimes someone will put something in there that just doesn't make any sense, but you know, we, we all know what we need to go to. And third party is, is a really good way to do it, if, if the town wants to do it. Sometimes don't wanna do that. But I think it would be up for discussion, whatever, whatever you prefer.
Your old plans that you were showing and you tend to refer back to, just drop it. They're not active, they were, they were, they're dead, even, they were never approved. So, and if, and the very first one.
Single filming one was.
Single one. Yeah, but that got, um, it canceled.
Never made it to the county.
Right, it never got recorded.
Yeah. Right, but I think, uh, we only throw the, throw those plates into the back of this, only because. You know, like this gentleman might have said, well, weren't there two other plans? What, what do those look like? Where are those, you know? And we just stuck them in there, just, just to get the ball rolling, just to, you know.
I think it just.
Yeah, I, I.
Confuses people.
Yeah, we would not carry those forward anymore.
Yeah, I, I assume just, don't even discuss them, discuss what you're doing.
Right, yeah.
Just keeps it simple.
There, there was originally a questions on that when we're.
Yeah, I know, and just, to me, it's just confusing.
They wanted to know what the differential wetland impacts were going to be and actually, we're less on our project, which is great. It was a good comparison, even just on the wetland impact.
Yeah. But the fact is, it's not your project.
Right.
So, yeah, Ben, you had.
I did, um, and spoke nicely about the impact on the Enfield Village and I appreciate that. As somebody who doesn't live in the village, but sits at the intersection of four A and four. In the morning, I think there's gonna be some concern about the impact of a couple of hundred more cars headed to Lebanon every morning at that intersection. So as your traffic study needs to study, I think both the intersection here with four. But that intersection as well, because, um, that's already a kind of treacherous spot.
So the four and four A, that river is down the hill?
When it comes down the hill and across the, across the, uh, river, um, you know, everyone headed to Lebanon in the morning. And the people coming up four A are trying to turn left there. Um, with, with a lot of traffic already, right? So this is gonna add a couple hundred more cars.
Should have been in circles.
To that, yeah, it should have been a circle, but traffic like something.
That was the original plan.
During the scoping meeting, I was, the DOT, they, they talked about that as well. And they kind of felt that, um, we have to prove it, but they felt that, uh, the majority of the cars. Come, are gonna come down and go right, go towards, uh, Route eighty-nine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, and they're gonna, they're gonna bump into four A.
Yeah.
Where there's already a lot of congestion and, and, and poor management, so you're gonna add to that.
Yeah.
With this project, so just make sure that that's part of the, part of the discussion.
Sure.
Because it's gonna be a significant impact and, and we depend on the school crossing guard to, to break up the traffic right now. And, uh, so that's, that's, it's gonna be an issue to add those cars.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, Ben?
That's it, thank you.
Nate? Um, thank you, I, I will start with transportation, since that's the theme at the moment. Sounds like you've initiated driveway permit discussions, you've had your statewide impact scoping meeting. At that scoping meeting, they would have determined what intersections you're gonna cover in traffic impact study. So I'm assuming site driveway, Route four, Maple and Main Street, did, is four and four A in that scope of that?
They had, they did discuss the four A, but I'm just kinda in my, I'm gonna get four A. If I come down this driveway.
Map there, the road coming up to the bottom part of the lake.
Steve, Steve, when we were driving in, remember you said, should we take it right here? And I said, no.
Right.
It would take.
Oh, way over there?
Way in London.
Oh, okay, I was thinking more.
So the traffic from your development.
It's a mile into Lebanon.
Oh, okay, I get it, yeah, yeah.
We'll, we'll, uh, we'll get you a copy of that, actually, I think, I don't know, Bob might have a copy.
What they were talking about is where I'm a little confused, is where if you came out the driveway, took a left. And then, you know, it goes down to the village and goes down the hill. They were talking about that intersection that, that they're working on now.
That's the Maple.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, if I may, in our previous market studies, we get included that intersection.
Yeah.
Yeah, just make sure it's part of their scoping.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, the, the interesting thing is that that meeting has already happened. Where they determined with DOT which intersections were gonna be included and not. Um, I suppose you can always add to it, you know, if it wasn't included, but do you know if it was included?
I, I don't remember, um, we do have a traffic engineer, he's not here, but, you know, we can always bring him in for the next one.
I, I think it'd be worthwhile to include that intersection in the scope of the, of, of the traffic impact study. Since your, your traffic largely is gonna be going through there.
Right.
Okay. In that traffic impact scoping study, was the project manager for the project? That is going down Drybridge Hill right past your entrance? There's a ten-year plan project right now, it's Enfield four zero five two six. It is, uh, it is basically a, a, a stabilization project and, and widening in some areas of Drybridge Hill. From the Main Street intersection to the Lebanon City Line, it goes right by your, your site access. Have you either through that meeting or through subsequent discussions with DOT? Been communicating with the project manager for that project? To ensure that whatever comes out of your traffic impact study is integrated with whatever the design of that project will ultimately be?
I don't remember them talking about that, but, um, they did do a, you know, around the, everybody was a lot of people there.
It was like ten people on the, on the call.
And they, uh, they actually went around the room saying, well, what other projects are going on that we need to know about? And I can't remember if they had listed that or not.
Okay.
Uh, but I'll.
Was something named Jason Ayo on the call?
He was.
He is the project, he's the project manager.
Yeah, he was on our call.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so you're, you know, whatever mitigation at your site access entrance is gonna be required as part of your trap. You know, through your traffic impact study process, should be coordinated as closely as possible with. The work that, that Jason Ayo is spearheading on that section of road.
We'll, we'll do that, uh, and copy Rob, you know, we'll reach out and ask them. Through, through our traffic engineer, he's still assembling everything and, uh, but yeah.
Um, I, I, I'll echo the issues on the sidewalk, uh. You, there are very nice sidewalks connecting the parking lots to the, to the apartment buildings, uh, it appears. If a child wants to walk to school, you know, a, a few minutes away, there's no way to do that. And I will disagree with everybody who says that, uh, you know, a painted line and a shero is an appropriate pedestrian. I, you know, the, this is so close to the village school, the ability of kids, uh, to walk to school. Um, and, and the ability, we can't have this development be a pedestrian island. That close to the village center of Enfield, it needs to be meaningfully connected. I would suggest Route four is probably your best way of doing that. I recognize you're in a tricky spot there with your site access in terms of topography, in terms of constraints on Route four, but. Sort of is what it is and that, that, that is, you know, in terms of children walking to school and, and, and an efficient connection to the rest of the village center. That probably is your best sidewalk connection point. So I would, uh, strongly encourage not only sidewalks to connect the parking areas to the, to the apartments. But, you know, internal site circulation that's, that's thoroughly connected with sidewalks to Route four and to the village school and beyond. So that children do have the ability to walk to school when they're that close, you know, um, and so.
Feature of the master plan.
Yeah.
It's hit over and over.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I, I, we, we should be careful to not create a pedestrian island. We need to think of pedestrians too, in the, in the context of, of how people move around the village here. On transit, you said you've had some discussions with advanced transit, the public transit company so far. Generally speaking. They are not big fans of, of diverting and going up into, to site driveways. The reason that, you know, they have the level of good ridership that they do in a relatively rural area is because their, their, their route design is efficient. It's because they don't do that. And, and it's, a, a wise person once told me, somebody knows when they're going the wrong way on a bus. And every time you divert to go up somebody's driveway for three minutes and stop there and then make your way back out for three minutes. That's six minutes that you just lost, going somewhere you didn't wanna go on a bus. Uh, so to the extent possible, I, I, I do think, you know, again, you're constrained with your site access area. It's a tough spot topographically and the like on Route four, but I think not only, you know, the sidewalks need to be a consideration there. But, but a bus stop needs to be a consider.
The last conversation we had, uh, was around the beginning of March and, um. They were, they were at the point where they did not wanna come into the project and they wanted a bus stop at the bottom. I, I pushed a little further and said, because of the amount of people that are here, it, uh, it may be a, a better idea to get away from Route four. And so now, where, where we are now, we're, we're juggling right now. So it could be at Route four with a small bus stop, or it could be in the project, but he didn't rule it out a hundred percent yet.
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, it's, that's not what they, they like to do.
And that's what, he explained all that to me.
Yeah.
But he also said that because of the size of the project, it might not be, you know, an impossibility.
Um, so again, I know you guys are working on a constrained location there with that site access, but that's your site access. And, and it's sort of, you know, there, and, and this is a substantial project and, and transit ridership and, and pedestrians are important and all that. That's my, my transportation piece. I have other pieces, uh, on, on other topics. Do we wanna continue with that or go around the table with others?
Um. I'm kind of feeling that we might want to have another conceptual session. Um, we do have Renee on the agenda. She's been waiting patiently for about an hour and forty-five minutes. And we do have a hard deadline on our zoning rewrite. So let's go around the table and get a feel. For whether we should invite Laramie Farms back for another session where we can talk. At an extended period of time or continue with them and. We'll probably have to truncate what amount of time is left.
Mr. Chair, uh, we'd be happy to do that and, uh, all the information we're getting, you know, Steve and I can work out. And then come back with some answers and some solutions that you would expect. And even if someone had some other thoughts and, you know, other categories or buckets of things, if they can get it to Rob and he can email them to us. We can address that too, uh, not sure how quickly you guys can pop out another meeting. We'd be happy to come back and actually have some answers to the stuff you've already asked about as well. So we could probably integrate all of that as, as we move along with the project.
What, what does the board feel? Start with Kurt.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Mike, I had a couple of other questions that, that came to me as we were talking, but they can be, I can email to Bob, Rob and discuss it for next meeting.
Paul?
I'm ready for the, the next meeting. I only have a couple of questions to start, but they keep gelling up with more conversation and I.
Yeah.
It's gonna take time.
Yeah. Nate?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a big and important project that requires, you know, careful discussion and thought. So, you know, recognizing that it's eight fifteen, if it's, if it's not an imposition on, 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 on the applicant. I would welcome them coming back for a, a continued conceptual discussion where we start to cover some of the other topics.
Jim?
I, I agree, uh, it was the first time I've seen this when it was handed out, so I hadn't had time to digest anything. And I, I would like to, as, as the other said.
Dan?
Yeah, but they come back, I've only got one or two questions that are those.
Eric? Brenda? Bill?
Yes, I, I would agree having them come back.
Okay.
Could they email, uh, could they provide the information to Rob so that we can digest them?
Yes.
And then waggle it everything and then get stuff back to you?
Yeah, definitely. Let's see, what's on our agenda for, what is it, twenty-eight? What do we have?
There's one voluntary merger, that's it.
Why don't we continue this, this conceptual on May twenty-eighth?
Send me some questions? Yeah, okay, I'll forward it to Carl.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Thank you, guys.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming in, um, I think we're off to a very good start. And I look forward to continuing this discussion on the twenty-eighth. And.
Will it be at six thirty again?
Yes.
After the voluntary lot merger.
After voluntary and that should not take too long.
No.
Perfect, I got it.
All right.
All right.
We'll see you in two weeks.
All right, next you'll be a time.
Thank you for coming.
Coming up.
You know, eighty-nine at night is a beautiful ride.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not. I came back that five years.
See you later.
Get my master's degree at nine o'clock at night, it is not a nice ride.
Okay, maybe not, maybe not at night.
Especially in the winter.
Thank you. My partner does it probably in this thing. Two times, three, eighty-three.
And what I was doing.
And sometime she gets off at eleven.
Yeah. The only good thing about it in the winter is if you spin out of control, you're not gonna hit another car.
That's true. Renee, thank you for waiting so patiently.
Sorry, Renee. No, it's okay, it's all right, and I feel bad because it's, I have a truncated kind of just update, so it's not too much tonight.
That's twice in a row. Last time was Eric's fault.
Yes.
Hey, it's eighty, you work, I'm, I'm absolutely on board for that, sure, yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Um, so, thanks for having me again tonight and I'm happy to be here. I think the event went pretty well.
Real well.
So, seemed very successful, I think we had some great engagement and great participations. Turnout, I think was great, unfortunately for the rainy weather, but I think that maybe worked in our favor. So, that was nice, um. Yeah, so we are, um, we've had a couple other, uh, the team has had some other projects and events in the last couple of weeks. So we're still working on compiling some of the summary of the topics, getting all our notes together and compiled. Um, some of the big things, you know, I've looked through some of the zoning pieces and started drafting some notes, um, and working on that. But we're hoping for the June meeting to have a little bit more summary from the event for you all. This, um, that's being passed around is, um, part of the New Hampshire, um, HOP grant that you all have. Um, a community engagement plan is a requirement of the grant, um, and is due on May thirty-first. So, um, we have, I have another town that I've also consulted with and, um, helped them draft it. This is a draft, um, again, completely up to the planning boards and the town's, um, discretion. But Rob and I had chatted the other day, um, I think, you know, for your community engagement, you've already had the biggest portion of it, being that public forum. Um, so that's on there and, uh, checked off as already, um, happened and delivered. And then, um, the two focus groups that were mentioned in the application are included on there. Um, and as we previously discussed, you know, planning board will kind of take lead with consultant, um, helping facilitate and assist as needed. And then I think I put on there, it wasn't necessarily in the application, but I think some thin engagement could be done. Pretty simply, and then we garner a little bit more, um, engagement outreach on maybe areas that we are seeing. Maybe pop up as some gaps or questions as we're doing some of this review over the summer, so. That's what I have drafted thus far, but open, um, for comments or feedback or changes to it, certainly.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Um, the online survey.
Yeah. Yes.
How is that going? Do you have any data on the response level to date?
I don't have that, I apologize, um. Anna and Grace have some of that data information and, and I apologize, I've had a couple of other things the last week. And some family matters, family matters the last couple of days, but I will, um, definitely have that overturned. the last week and some family matters, family matters the last couple of days, but I will, um, definitely have that over to Rob soon. And we'll try to get a summary app to you guys for your next meeting on the twenty-eighth, just so you have it. Um, and it is on the website still and it's still active and live. So certainly keep pushing people to it. I mean, we're two weeks out from it. I think it's, um, you know, we can turn it off, but I think we could utilize it again in the summer with some of the thin engagement farmer market or the poster board idea at the library. Um, to have it there to help capture more information too. So we'll, um, see where we're at definitely by the twenty-eighth. Um, so I'll make a note of that.
Okay. Anybody else have any input for Renee or questions?
Tonight is not the night to do it, I think, but at some point we should have, I don't know what the right word is, a post-event discussion or debrief.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. What, whatever the case may be, uh, I was a facilitator of, of one of the groups and we had a tremendous discussion. And, and with great ideas.
Yep.
Some of those ideas, uh, you know, actually, you know, about the, the proposed boundaries, you know, they should be over here and they should be over here. I think it'd be good to talk through uh, all of that and, 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 you know, what we, you know, what we heard in our various groups. And what changes we want to make to the, 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 the initial proposal, you know, in terms of the, the, the three, the three zones and how we, we may want to tweak that based on what we heard and, and set a direction of, you know, where, where we're going to go, uh, in terms of beginning to translate that into the written word. Uh, but I think a debrief is in order so that we can all hear in, in more detail than we had in the kind of, you know, ten-minute final wrap-up session where we bounced around each table. Uh, but for us to have a, a, a little bit more in-depth discussion about what we heard and, and start to try to come to consensus on how we integrate all of what we heard into what becomes a draft zoning proposal.
What about a working session? Well, a, a working session, if there are more than, I don't know, it's public, but you know, just to where that's the only topic we come together to talk about is, which is a scrap, couple hours.
I always, basically, that's what it's supposed to say is you need to have a special meeting just to discuss this if we want to go anywhere with this. Otherwise, we're going to have these thirty-minute discussions at, at the meeting, the scheduled meeting time.
At eight-thirty at night.
Right, right. And it ju, it just doesn't work. It needs to be one meeting off, off the plant, off, on, off Wednesday. Or whatever, where we just sit down and this is all we discuss.
Everybody free next Wednesday?
No. No.
No.
No.
Yeah, that's, that's the
Wednesday.
Please. They don't schedule it. Monday?
Monday, select board next week.
Tuesday.
That would be Tuesday, the twentieth?
No.
Wednesday, the twenty-first is out.
Thursday, the twenty-first is out. Yep.
That's Wednesday, the twenty-first.
Yeah, well, that's how.
Um,
Tuesdays, the, I mean, Thursday's the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, going once.
That is, uh, Eric, I think you're involved with me and Ed on the Citizens Academy for a session. I'm gonna take a second.
Um,
or you got?
I don't think I am. I think that Tracy is.
Yeah, I'll be there. He's out.
I'm involved in that as well.
Anybody want to do it on a Saturday? Well, no takers.
I can.
Cause if it's, unless it's this Saturday, the following Saturday is Memorial Day weekend.
So that is true. Um,
What if we have it the first, our first meeting in June? And that's the only thing on the schedule.
Well, there is a problem with that. Um, the first meeting in June happens to coincide with Renee's
Right.
Regional planning annual meeting.
Annual meeting.
So we definitely are not going to have Renee.
No.
And Rob and I are likely to attend that meeting. And I think anybody else who wants to sign up for it, um, could do so. Who's the speaker? How about June fourth?
I can't do tomorrow night. I have another
I don't think it's giving us Right.
Right. Well, I mean, we don't have to meet here if we're just having a, a group discussion.
But if we're, if we're meeting, we have to warn them.
You have to post where you're meeting, but it doesn't say you have to be here. Can you get the community building?
Yeah, but it has to be twenty-four hours.
You gotta warn it twenty-four hours.
But
Tomorrow's.
So we couldn't start it until
Like the Monday, the select board meeting air, but
He's on the select board here.
Yeah.
Um,
So how about the week of Memorial Day, either that is the twenty-seventh, the Tuesday before our next meeting?
Yeah. Let's just stay here till midnight.
I, I am not available on the twenty-seventh. Probably.
Twenty-ninth, Thursday?
Yeah, I can't do that.
Could you guys, sometimes I've seen boards do like an hour before their normal meeting of six-thirty and do it like five-thirty to six-thirty in work session. So it's on the same night. It just ends up being decided earlier rather than later. So your pressure. Yeah, could do it.
Bring your own spring year potluck.
Not a bad idea.
Anybody want to do that? Five-thirty on the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
And tell, tell them to not come until seven o'clock because we're going to have the, we're going to also have to have the, the merger.
Yeah. And, yeah.
That way we can go till quarter seven if we have to. For the, for the merger.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Done.
So five-thirty on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
I try.
I'll probably need a reminder that it's at five-thirty.
Very.
It's a school board night.
Okay.
Cause that hasn't been like noticed or
Next meeting?
The other twenty.
Uh, yeah, it's on, it's on the calendar. We can certainly adjust it. We've got plenty of time.
Anything else for Renee?
Uh, just one minor thing. So the, the, uh, farmer's market is not happening as a town sponsor of this year.
Right.
Right.
So just as you're thinking about, there is a private group that has sort of taken over a similar event in a private space, which may be in a perfect place to do it.
Yeah.
But just
Okay. Town. So to connect with the
It, it may, it may well serve the purpose of what you're trying to do, but it's not a town sponsor of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good to know. Um, yeah.
Anything else?
We'll say minutes again or what?
Um, we, we're already backed up by two minutes. I, I'm going to suggest that we knock off the two minutes that are backlog and dispense with the rest of the reports.
Good idea.
Everybody amenable?
Good idea.
I'm just full of good ideas tonight. Folks?
Legislature screwed up so bad, you don't want to talk about it.
Dan, you hit the nail on the head exactly.
When the Senate's talking about digital mining.
Okay. Um, April ninth minutes. Where are we? Here they are.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming, Renee.
Thank you, Renee.
Thanks, Renee, again.
You're welcome. Yes. Thank you, guys. And
Next time, don't say your computer's frozen.
I was like, come on. It was like me. I was like, I don't have to restart this thing and I don't have it. Um, yeah, so it's all right. It was, uh, it was helpful to learn about some of that project. So
I'll bet.
Yeah.
Does everything that they said comport with what your organization knows about it?
I think so. I, I, I'm not as much in the transportation realm, so that's more my colleagues, Tim and Megan. So I would defer, but I'm happy to check in with them and, uh, yeah.
And they'll be involved because this is a project of regional impact.
We didn't even get to that, but I, you know, they, they must know as soon as, as soon as it becomes a area. Regional impact.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, Renee.
Yes.
Okey-dokey.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of April ninth.
Vote in his, we, we need discussion.
For Gano after we make the motion.
Uh, Tim seconded. Any discussion?
Well, I guess it wasn't premature.
Here it is none. All, all in favor of accepting the April ninth minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Am I allowed to vote? I did read the minutes, but I was present at the meeting.
Uh, should I have those questions?
He wasn't a member at the time.
Yeah.
Time, yeah.
Yeah. Your, your life begins tonight. Um, so we, how many, uh, yays did we have?
Six.
Yes.
Six yays.
Six yays. And an abstention.
And an abstention. Fine. Next. April twenty-third.
I'll make a motion that we accept the April twenty-third two, oh, two-five minutes as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there discussion?
Yes. Line sixty-eight has something in it that's bizarre. It must be some sort of shorthand note or I'm, I'm not quite sure what it is, but That's that we should probably strike that.
Stricken.
But how could I miss that? Okay. Anything else?
Something that only I would know, probably.
I think I figured it out. You, you need to go back and listen at the twenty-five to twenty-six minute mark to clarify what was said about map layers.
Yep.
Oh my gosh, that's great. Why waste time doing spaces?
It's, it's, there is logic to that shorthand. I, you know, but yeah.
Linda, would you like to withdraw your motion and make a different one?
I would like to withdraw my motion and make a different one that the minutes of April twenty-third be accepted as corrected.
Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obeying? Six yays, one abstention. Somebody want to make a motion?
Dan always makes the
I'll make a motion that we adjourn at eight-thirty-four. Wait a minute. Public comment. You sorry? Comment. I take back my motion.
I'm sorry. Public comment. Is there any?
Yeah. Um, just, uh, just to bring something to your attentions. Um, the packet that you got from Laramie Farms tonight, you want to look on, um, sheet twelve of fifteen. Looks like this.
Yep.
And what that is, is there are six, um, crossings, uh, wetland impact of the, um, emergency access road. And that's just the map kind of outlining them. And I just, when uh, when Laramie Farms went to the zoning board to ask for their approval for that road, that was one of them. And even though the final decision has to do with estate on wetlands, um, they had to also go to the conservation commission. The conservation commission wrote a letter to the zoning board to say that they approved the wetland crossings with the exception that the road always, that wouldn't get paved, that would stay gravelled. Now I notice on this map, it does say gravel.
Mm-hmm.
However, I'm just bringing it, bringing it to your attention so that it stays there. So that should you have future conversations with this group, that somehow it's not paid. Um, and it's for emergency access and it's not full of gravel.
Okay, that, that is a good point. And I would ask that you bring that up again during one of the site plan public hearings so that it gets into the record. But good point. Thank you. And who do we have?
Doctor Buffet.
Doctor Buffet. David, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I think, uh, that, uh, um, there's a, a, as presented and as we saw on the video tonight, uh, um, Tim's, uh, um, to put it in, uh, uh, just a couple of words, the, the proposed plan is certainly a, uh, major change in the character of, of our town. Um, and that needs to be considered. Um, uh, that we're looking to, um, not become another Mount Prospect Road, um, in, uh, in Lebanon. Um, and those buildings certainly look a lot like that. Um, the other thing is I think the issue that um, was raised about walking, biking, et cetera. Um, I cannot imagine maybe even you Kurt or, um, or others that bike more than I do. Um, would ha, have any desire to, to bike Drawbridge Hill up or down, uh, just due to the traffic risks. Um, and I, uh, think that there needs to be some way both for pedestrians and bikes to safely get across that, um, highway, um, and then, um, onto, onto safer, um, routes of transportation.
Yeah, those are good points and, um, it certainly sounds from the discussion tonight that we are going to have further discussions on the topic of pedestrian and bike routes from the development down into the village, whether it's the school, stores, um, any future entertainment venues, whatever happens to, you know, come into town. And we will see how they respond. But we can certainly, um, you know, we will have discussion on that in the future as we, as we progress on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I do?
Yes, sir. Does anybody have in stomach or hanging on another twenty minutes to nine o'clock and at least start our discussion about the debrief?
I would rather do it all at once.
Yeah. Motion has been made and I think seconded. Somebody second your motion, Dan?
Probably not. Don't make it again because I withdrew it.
Find it all seconded.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. Do I hear a second?
Linda seconds.
Linda seconds. All in favor of a journey? Say aye. Opposed?
All opposed, stick around.
Yeah.
Abstention. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Eight-thirty-nine.
Good night.
Eight-thirty-nine it is.
Yes.
I know.
Bill thinks